I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the Fridley School Board meeting, January 16th, to order. And before we get started with approving our agenda items, I would like to welcome Ivana Stark, who is our newest board member. We had elections in November, and Ivana was elected to the board to take Marcia Lindblad's place, who just retired, who's at home watching us on TV, I'm sure. So, welcome to the board, and we look forward to working with you and serving with you, and I'm sure you'll bring great things to our district.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Approval of the agenda with suggested motions and resolutions, do we have anyone who makes a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved to approve?
Second.
Moved by Riddle, seconded by Prueado. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of those opposed, motion carried. And in usual fashion, we'll start out with our spotlight on recognition.
Today, it is my pleasure to announce Lance Bailey is the Employee of the Month for January. I believe that this is still a secret, so if you're viewing from home, please don't go and tell Lance, because I think he will find out on Thursday morning. But congratulations to Lance as the Employee of the Month. He's been in the district for seven years. He has a steady influence on our staff and students and families. He's a paraprofessional working with students with special needs, and a sports coach as well. He works in the high school. He works diligently with humility and grace, always keeping our students' best interests in mind. After a full day of Level III Special Education work, he then coaches one of three of his sports teams all three seasons. He's got an eighth-grade football. He's also in wrestling, where he's an assistant coach, and ninth-grade baseball. Lance has a vast background in broadcast and digital media. He helps with many of our teams create professional-quality highlight videos of teams' celebrations and banquets. For many years, he has served as the Director of the Live Commencement Broadcast, and documenting this crowning achievement for our high school seniors and their family. Lance also supports the Distinguished Alumni Ceremony as well, including production of the event's very first honorary recognition video in 2015. So, congratulations to Lance Bailey.
Congratulations, Lance. I want to be there when he finds out.
Yes.
Nobody tell him. I can't wait to hear about what's next on our agenda. Principal Vosler, would you come on up? You're going to do a presentation about Stevenson Elementary, and the people may be on TV in the back of the room can't see, there is fun stuff on the floor here in front of us. So, what do you have for us?
Well, thanks for having us. We, if we were to sum up what, I guess I'm in charge of this, if we were to sum up here quickly, kind of what we see our mission as at Stevenson, we came up with five bullet points to try to simplify things. One is academic skills, teaching academic skills and basic skills to our kids to get them off and rolling in their educational career. Second is, we really believe to be good role models and teach positive character development throughout their time at Stevenson. Third thing that we try to do is we teach, we build life skills with them, things like problem-solving, learning to work with others, building thinking skills, are just some of the skills that we try and incorporate into the way we deliver our lessons. And then the last two are what we want to focus on here tonight. We want to just demo a couple of ways that we feel like we try to build a love of learning in our kids, so that they can take this into the future, and then experiences that kids will remember. So, we're going to take a few moments here just to show you some of the things that our kids are doing, and not that we're doing. Veronica Matheson, if you'd come up and kick off the types of action that we have at our school.
All right. Good evening. One of the most exciting components of our primary year's program is action. And every year at Stevenson, we work really hard to pull together a huge annual school-wide project to support a local organization and help teach our kids and our families about the resources that are available, as well as teach them how to get back. We have done past projects that have included the Angel Foundation, that is an organization that supports families facing cancer. We have sent off boxes to soldiers. We supported the Alexandra House recently, where our students made blankets. And we also have packed food for impact lives. Last spring, we supported Babies Need Boxes, which is a really great organization that is local. And the organization provides resources and boxes that are actually sturdy enough for babies to sleep in to expecting families. And here is a little care-loving clip, because we were featured on the news.
... Dream of a Twin Cities mom who wants to help struggling families around the state. Now Babies Need Boxes has blossomed, thanks to funding from the founder of Amazon. Students at RL Stevenson Elementary in Fridley are filling 600 boxes with baby essentials that will help families across Minnesota.
What's really cool about doing this event is that we're bringing our message of safe sleep to the students who may have a baby brother or sister, and they need to know what safe sleep looks like for them as well.
The concept started in Finland as a safe sleeping space for babies to reduce infant mortality rates. The boxes are available to residents of the Twin Cities, and we have a link online if you're interested in pickup locations. But when we come...
Okay. It was an awesome project. We packed hundreds and hundreds of boxes. And a number of our families were actually recipients of the boxes too, which was really exciting. One of, another way that we take action is through groups. And we have a signature program at Stevenson, and I forgot to bring the book up here. It's called Bedtime Math. And Bedtime Math, they have a mission to make math a fun part of kids' everyday lives and lower math anxiety, because we know that people hear the word "math," and some of them start to panic. And if they develop that love and see that it can actually be really fun, they're going to be so much more successful. So, this is not something that we require our kids to do. It is something that is optional. And so, what's awesome about it is the 36 kids that are pictured there, they decided to do Bedtime Math with their families just to better themselves. And the one thing that we really love about Bedtime Math is that it incorporates literacy, a little bit of math, and a little bit of science in one short little story. And then the kids choose a level of problems, everyone can do it, from a kindergartner to an upper-level kid. And the stories are fun, and it's a great thing to connect parents with kids at the end of the evening. The research has shown that kids that do it five minutes a day can grow up to six additional months in math, and that's absolutely huge. So, it's a great program, and we're really happy to have it at Stevenson. And kids and parents are saying, here's a few quotes, "Every time I do Bedtime Math, a Bedtime Math problem, my brain grows." I love the fun little stories. It's challenging and fun, and Bedtime Math builds my child's confidence. And that is one of the huge goals of the program and what we're trying to do in Fridley. So, now we're going to hear from Tricia Carlson, one of our first-grade teachers, and some students.
All right. Hi there. I heard a quote once that stated many of the jobs we have today did not even exist 10 years ago. And 65% of elementary students will ultimately end up working in completely new job types that aren't even on our radar yet. So, because of this, instead of asking our students, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" We should be asking them, "What problem would you like to solve?" And so, I have some Stevenson problem solvers here with me today that took action and worked to solve problems. First, I have Claire Heine, who took action during one of her units of inquiry. And I also have three students from Ms. Biedelman's third-grade class who took action and solved a problem as an entire class. Let's hear what they have to say.
I learned about sketch maps in class and decided to make a sketch map of my house. This activity helped me grow my brain and know where things are around my house.
This is Ms. Reed's third-grade class. They lost all their stuff, so we brought toys, clothes, and school stuff to give them.
When Hurricane Harvey came to Texas, everything was gone, clothes, schools, and so on.
So, we gave away some clothes. We donated a lot of stuff to help them. We are from Ms. Biedelman's class. This activity helped us learn and practice empathy and kindness towards others.
So, they said it all, but Ms. Reed's class, Ms. Reed was one of my former coworkers, and she works at a school in Sheldon ISD. And their district took a pretty big hit during Hurricane Harvey, so I had reached out to some former coworkers, and she responded right away. So, we did as much as we could. We were able to send about four large boxes down to them, raising funds. We sent gift cards, and then I had some family donate money, so we were able to send it all and cover the shipping. And so, we hope to continue on our relationship with their class too, and check in on them, and Skype, and things like that, or even just pen pals.
May I ask the students a question? Would you guys be willing to stay for a question?
Yes.
There you go. He's like me on my tippy toes. What was it like for you to be able to help another school like that? What was that like for you?
Well, it made me feel happy for the other third graders that...
That's a great way to feel. That's a great way to feel.
What you told me today, when I said, "How did that make you feel?" She can't read.
Well, we won't put you on the spot, but I think it's pretty great that you guys make such a big difference so far away. Thank you.
I just have to add that one of my sons is in Ms. Biedelman's class, and I know that he especially was super, super excited to partner and do some long-distance help. So, thank you.
And I love that these guys are showing action and extending their learning outside the walls of the classroom. And now, we're going to go on to some of the classroom highlights and things that are going on inside the classroom. One of the things is coding and B-bots. Students are using some of the coding skills that they're learning in the classroom, as well as in media, to program the B-bots in different patterns across the grid. And also, we've been starting to do some breakout boxes activities. And what that is, is set up like an escape room, where students have to work together and problem-solve. And they work on problems such as this, where they find clues. And then they work together to unlock boxes, where they put in the codes. And you can see, these are three pictures of students in my classroom that did it. And they worked with cooperation skills and problem-solving skills. And you can see at the bottom, they were super excited when they unlocked all the boxes and got the prize, or unlocked all the locks and got the prize at the end. So, now I'm going to bring Diane Ray up here, and she's going to share with you some of the activities that are going on after-school at Stevenson. So, we have so many really great programs going on after-school. Some of you might remember, I came a couple of years ago with actually two of these students, and told you about how we were starting coding, that we had just one code camp at that time. Now, we have six teachers teaching after-school code camps. And look at just the list. So many wonderful things for our students going on after-school, and the kids really love this. So, yes, the robots talk when we turn them on. Tonight, I brought my top four coders. These four were in my very first code camp, and they excelled, therefore they have the black T-shirts, like a black belt.
Like a black belt.
When you get to the highest level, you get the black. So, this year, they have learned how to use Dash and Dot, which are these robots. And also, I just wanted to mention that all four of these students speak another language at home. So, these guys are super awesome. And so, each one of us is going to show a different thing that they've learned how to do by programming Dash and Dot. First up, we will have Pretty, and she programmed Dash to play her version of Jingle Bells. She used the Xylo app to do this. And Muntaha programmed her Dash to dance along to the music. Next up, we have Lisandro.
That's wonderful.
So, there are actually three apps that the kids use, and each one uses a different kind of programming. So, Lisandro has programmed his Dash to say hi, to make a square, and to change sound and lights at each 90-degree angle. And at the end, Dash will do a celebration dance. And he is using Blockly for this. She used the Xylo app to program Dash to play a song that she created and to do a dance. And Pretty's Dash is going to dance to Muntaha's song. All right, next up, we have Abdi. You might remember him from two years ago. Tonight, he's using the Wonder app to program Dash to move all the trash to the red cup The program that he's using, by the way, is the same program that high school students are using to run our new soundboard. So, if they have any problems over there, just call these guys.
I was thinking Cindy could use him in transportation.
I'm thinking buildings and grounds needs this guy. So, the students are really definitely learning 21st-century skills by programming these robots. Next, we have Muntaha, also from two years ago. Her Dash is going to greet the two dots and remove the trash from the top of the bushes. So, there you go. Our students are definitely becoming great problem solvers at Stevenson.
Thank you so much. I don't remember having this much fun when I was in elementary school.
Thank you for the great presentation and showing us your skills in person like that, instead of just hearing about it. You guys are doing great work, and it looks fun too.
Right?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I know that there will be a lot of problems that this world will not have to, you know, deal with anymore with kids like this. So, thank you so much. Mr. Vosler, do you have anything more to say to us tonight?
I do not, other than our parents, thanks for getting them here on the night that is very cool out there. So, we appreciate you getting them here. Thank you.
And poor Matt.
I know, do you have to follow that up?
The deal is, this is about bedtime math, and that's Matt's life too.
There you go. Hammer, would you come up and share some bedtime math by reviewing the revised budget with us, please?
I'm Matt Hammer. I'm the Director of Finance for the Fridley Public School District. And I am here tonight to present our revised budget for 2017-18. So, like everything we do at the school district, it revolves around the school board's priorities, which are listed here, improving academic achievement on the top, using most effective instructional strategies, maintaining a safe and positive learning environment, building financial stability, improving parent-school-and-community partnership. So, with everything in the school district, it's driven by enrollment. The state of Minnesota, most of our funding formulas are driven straight off of our enrollment figures, and we call that an ADM, Average Daily Membership. So, this is our trend from 2013 to our projected trend here in 1718. As you can see, we've been on a positive upward trend from 2013 to 2016, with slow growth in enrollment over those years. And this is the first year in some time where we're actually anticipating a decrease. So, for 2017-18, our enrollment at the end of 2016 was 3,052 students. And for our estimate right now, as we go into our revision, for 1718, we're estimating 3,020 students.
Does that, I might be putting the cart before the horse here, does that impact, then, the budget that we anticipated for this year?
Yeah, I did leave that off, that slide. Our adopted enrollment projection was actually 3,025, so it's only down about five. But yes, it does have an effect on the overall revenue budget for the district for the year. This is a outlook on just breaking, a breakdown of our schools, and these are our served students. So, Stevenson and Hayes are two elementaries. They represent the K4 and the dark maroon. Our 5'8" is our middle school, and our middle school students, middle school and middle school ALC, which is represented in gold. And our orange, which is our 912, which is represented with our high school ALC and our high school classes. That's just a breakdown, and it kind of gives you a trend of where we've been over the last number of years. This slide is a breakdown and represents how we measure our health as a school district. The school board's board policy on fund balance is between 7% and 10% of unassigned fund balance. We are projecting at the end of 1718 to be just above that fund balance policy at 7.08% or $2.4 million in unassigned fund balance. Again, we've been on a trend here where we've stayed fairly flat over the last number of years, making sure we're spending the dollars appropriately and staying within our board policy. On this chart, we're giving an illustration of where do our revenues come from in the general fund. And a large majority of our revenues at Fridley Schools come in state aids, with that making up roughly 82% of our overall revenues. Local revenues makes up a smaller percentage of that, 15% approximately, with local taxpayer revenue making up most of that chunk there, about $5 million. And then the other million comes through miscellaneous donations, gifts, and fees that we charge for things. And then federal revenues makes up a very small percentage of our overall revenues at 2.8%. So, a total revenue budget for FY18 is set at $44,24,658 for the year. Our general fund, from an unassigned perspective, we're projecting unassigned revenues to be $34,127,000, which is slightly under what we're projecting for overall unassigned expenditures at $34,167,000. So, we're projecting to spend, fund balance down by about $40,000 in the FY18 fiscal year, again, driven by that slight decrease in enrollment that has kind of flipped this pendulum from where we were at the revised budget. Again, 7.08%, right at the bottom and right within our fund balance policy. Expense budget, this is a good chart. It breaks down our expenditures by program. And if you take a look at this chart, starting on the right, on the bottom, Regular Instruction, and going to the left to People Support Services, that makes up about 80 cents on a dollar. So, 80 cents on a dollar goes directly to support students. This is better than when we benchmark against most of our districts around us, and we're proud of this achievement here, to making sure that most of our dollars goes directly to support students. Sites and buildings administration and other district support services make up the other Again, this is another snapshot. The school business is a heavy human capital business, and 75% of our overall expenditures in that general fund go directly to employee wages and benefits, with purchase services, supplies, capital expenditures, a small bit of debt service, and then a few other expenditures that we account for with transfers and whatnot that make up the other portions.
Matt, can you just summarize what kind of things go into purchase services?
So, purchase services, a large piece of that is transportation. And then, other pieces are for utilities, energy, other services that we purchase for staff that we can't find licensure, so on and so forth for. Now, we're going to look at some what I consider our non-major funds. We just finished up with the general fund, but other non-major funds, including our Food Service and Nutritional Service Fund. Currently, we're projecting a deficit spend, which is on purpose in this fund. Mary and her staff have built up a reserve to help fund some major food service expenditures and equipment, and the Food Service Fund. So, right now, as we look at our 1718 revenues over expenditures, we're forecasting spending our deficit spending by $55,000 for the year, but Mary still has a healthy fund balance at the end of the year at $507,000, projected at June 30, 2018. The Community Service Fund, this is the fund that ECFE, School Readiness, Adult Programming, all those types of things take place in. Revenues are projected to exceed expenditures with a surplus of $18,407, with about a 10% reserve overall at $433,000 at year-end, is what we're projecting at this point in time. And then, to sum up the other funds, our Capital Projects Funds, which is made up of our construction funds for our referendum projects, as well as our Capital Projects Levy, is anticipated to spend down of about $400,000. levy, is anticipated to a spend down of about $4.5 million, which puts us at about $2.5 million left for Phase III projects. Our internal service fund, which is where we house our dental, our self-funded dental and self-funded medical plan, we're projecting an end reserve there to be just above our 35% minimum at $1.9 million. And then our debt service, where we run our amortization payments through for all the debt service we have in place for past bonds, and those funds come out of our debt service fund, and we're projecting a surplus there of about $1,029,000, which is by statute that we're required to carry 5% of debt access. So are there any questions on that? If anybody has any questions, my contact information is here. Feel free to reach out to me, and this presentation will be out on our website as well.
Thank you. Good report.
So as you know, that this, tonight, we will ask you to accept the revised budget, and I'll just remind us that we, there are kind of three parts to building a budget. One is a preliminary budget that we do in the winter. Then there's an adopted budget that has to be done prior to July 1, before June 30 of the year. And then the revised budget, which people do at various times, but typically it's December, January of the school year. Sometimes school districts do more than one revised budget. We have typically only done the one revised budget. So I always like to remember that we think of this as being on par. So we preliminary budget, the adopted budget, the revised budget. So the minute this revised budget is approved, the start tomorrow is on the preliminary budget for the following school year. And again, that, obviously, that work has already begun, but that's the cycle that we're in, so.
Thank you for that explanation, Peggy. And thank you, Matthew, for that report. Next, we move on to business action items. Do I have a motion to accept our school board organization and salary for 2018? This is where the election of our board officers for the 2018 year, the school board representatives for the various organizational committees that school board members sit on representing our district, and then the school board salaries for 2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the school board organization.
Second.
Motion by Pareto, seconded by Riddle. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a motion, I will be asking for a motion for the annual school board authorizations. This includes approving the Sun Focus as the official newspaper for 2018, which is where any of the school districts' public notices, bids, et cetera, are posted so that the public can see those. Official depositories for 2018-19, approved attorney firms for legal services as needed, authorization for the treasurer to pay contracted salaries of school personnel upon the order of district, of the district chair and clerk, authorization of the treasurer to pay special payroll wages upon the order of the district chair and clerk, authorization for the treasurer to invest in any temporary surplus funds in treasury notes, treasury bills, certificates of deposit, or other securities authorized by Minnesota statutes, authorization of the superintendent and district of, director of finance to use facsimile signatures of district officials for checks and orders, authorization for the superintendent and director of finance to utilize electronic transfer of investments and payments, authorization for the superintendent and district of finance to lease, purchase, and contract for goods and services within the budget as approved by the school board, and the 2018-19 memberships in the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, Metropolitan ECSU, Minnesota School Board Association, and Schools for Equity in Education. Do I have a motion to approve those school board authorizations for the 2018-19 year?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, motion by Pareto, seconded by Riddle. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. And our next motion is to accept the revised budget, as just outlined by Finance Director Matthew Hammer, for 2017-18. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the revised budget and assumptions for 2017-18.
Second.
Moved by Riddle, seconded by Pareto. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next up, we have the consent agenda, which includes minutes of the school board business meeting and work session held on December 19 of 2017, the monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leave of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements. Also includes the 2018-19 school calendar and the Farm to School grant awarded. I would like to highlight under, under our staff updates that we have accepted a retirement letter from Superintendent Peggy Flathman. So we congratulate you on your retirement. Peggy will be with us throughout the remainder of the school year, so she will be finishing up the year with us. So the board will be discussing the process now for how to move forward with filling her position at the end of the school year.
So I, before you officially vote on this, I just want to say that it has been a pleasure and certainly an opportunity that I never believed that I would have when I came here in January of 2005 as the Director of Educational Services. So this is a place that quickly became part of my blood, you know, the black and gold that is here. I have been able to work with an incredible group of people, from custodians to teachers to people all, you know, and the parents. To be able to serve the parents and the kids of this place is pretty remarkable. This is a place that, I've said this to many people, that there is always six degrees to Fridley. Wherever you go, there's always somebody who had somebody who was connected to this place, and I feel very fortunate to have had that connection here. So thank you very much for the opportunity to serve the kids and families of this place, so I will miss it.
You will be missed.
I'm still processing it, so. Most, most people who don't interact with the superintendent on a regular basis really have no idea the gift we have in Peggy's skills and abilities and heart here for the Fridley district. So we can save the mushy stuff for later. You've still got six, seven months to work for us.
You're not getting rid of me that fast.
All right. So, so the process will be forthcoming around the hiring process for the superintendent. So with that, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion by Pareto, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Now, we have written information, so student enrollment, Dr. Flathman.
In your packet on page 46 is the monthly update, and this is, of course, is January. Typically, we do see a slight decline as we kind of roll into the middle and change with the semester here. You will probably see that there might be another little dip here in February. But I will want, draw your attention to the middle school, and even though the number went from 3,024 in adopted budget to 3,020 in this budget, the middle school is a place that we are paying particular attention to because we had anticipated that we'd have about 950 students, and we are under 900. So I think Matt has 893 in the revised budget for us. So we have to do some more digging into why that's happened. But again, that, the shift then came with a few more in the elementary, which is always good. We love to have our students come in early and then stay with us, but, so those are some pieces that we're doing. In the past two years, and we'll do it again this year, is that we have worked with a demographer throughout the state, Hazel Reinhardt, and she will be taking a look at these numbers. Again, we actually gave her the numbers at the beginning of December. So we should have a report from her probably mid to end of February, and then we'll look at that. But more importantly, we've taken a look at our 4th to 5th grade numbers and 5th to 6th grade numbers and exactly who those students are. So more to come on that, particularly as we roll out the preliminary adopted budget.
Thank you for that further explanation, Peggy. Now, we have reports from school board members. The Association of Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting held on January 5, and I'm going to ask Peggy to report out on that one as well.
We had information on a couple of legislative platforms and policy statements that was there. We also had an update from the group of about 35 school districts that have formed, of which Fridley was a part, of Reimagine Minnesota. So there's some work that had been done in the past, and sometime this spring, we will be able to share more of that and then how that will impact, or how that is impacting and how that work is being done through our strategic plans, particularly the world's best workforce and our achievement in integration. The other piece that was there that day was, we were introduced to Eric Martins. Eric Martins is the incoming executive director, I believe his name is Steed, who has left as, or who will be leaving as the executive director of Minnesota State High School League. He's been with the league for many, many years. Eric is and will be taking over, I think, in March, and he is the current principal at Sauk Rapids. So we're excited to kind of begin to work with him and seem very connected to the superintendents that were in the school, were present with AMSD that day. So that will be another transition that will be happening.
Thank you for that report. Next, the Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting held on January 10, and I was the, am the representative for that. Quick update on that, we received an update from Dr. David Everett. He gave the school, he gave our board a history of the equity work happening in the 916 district since 2011 and an update on the current practices. So they've had, they've had a plan that they've been kind of chunking away at year after year, and they're continuing to make progress on that plan. One of the things that they're doing with their teachers and have offered now to do with the board as well is each individual will take the Intercultural Development Inventory, the IDI. This is something that's also available for other districts to take if they're interested, but it helps to, it helps individuals advance their own personal equity journey. So to help understand what your own biases are so that you can better understand when you're making decisions for your organization and your school district, that you're aware of your own biases and continue to work on those as a part of that. So I will have the opportunity to take that, and that's something we can talk about if, as an option for.
May I interject?
Yes.
That probably two-thirds of our leadership team has already taken the IDI a couple years ago. And a year ago, we sent Tara Stephenson, who's a psychologist at our high school. She is a trainer, so she is, she could do that for us. She can administer that, the IDI.
I knew you were going to say we were already on top of that.
Yeah, well.
This is why she's so good. Continuing update, Ramsey County Mental Health, we got a clip of a film that they have done. It's called "The Whole Story." It's a documentary-style training film around children's mental health and trauma. The clip that we saw was very good. This is a free resource for schools and healthcare facilities, et cetera, to utilize to help address mental health issues for those people working with kids and families. So I'll pass that information on to the administration because that's something that we can access at no charge to use. They also are starting to proactive measures, workshop series over the summer. Some of our Fridley staff participated in this last year, and they found it very successful. And so they'll be offering it 10 weeks over, or 10 workshops over the summer, again, for staff, to help them not lose ground in their, in their work, working with special ed and development opportunities, working with, with kids in special ed settings. So it's, it's to help keep those teachers so they don't lose that momentum over the summer. And they just hired a Director of Human Resources for the district, and that, that is the bulk of the report. Next, important future school board dates. So on the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting, January 17 at 6:15 at the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Office, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting, which is February 2nd from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. at the Ties Conference Center, the Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting, which is February 7 at 6:00 p.m. at the Bel Air School, the Schools for Equity in Education, which is February 9 from 9:00 to 12:30, 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. That's at the Radisson Hotel in Roseville. And the Fridley Public School Board Meeting for February will be February 20, work session 5:30 p.m. in the City Hall Conference Room A, the open forum at 7:00 p.m. in the City Hall Conference Room A, and business meeting at 7:30 p.m. in the Fridley City Council Chambers.
I have one more date that I'd like to put out there for everyone. The inaugural Black and Gold Gala will be held next Thursday, the 25th of January. It's being held at Banquets of Minnesota. It starts at, I believe, 5:00 or 5:30 with a social hour. Follow that by dinner. There'll be also silent auctions, live auctions, and the proceeds go to the Fridley School Foundation and their work with helping out with scholarships and all of our booster clubs. Certainly, the tickets are still available. We have a few seats remaining, so if anybody does have any questions or would like to be a part of that, should they get ahold of you, Lori, probably? Or they can also check out the Fridley Schools Foundation website, so.
Thank you for adding that, Chris. That'll be a great event, and the Fridley Schools Foundation does a lot for our kids when you hear about the kind of scholarship money that they give away each year. So unfortunately, I'm going to be traveling, so will not be able to attend, but I encourage you to, and I would be there if I could be. If there are no other announcements or additions, I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Pareto, seconded by Riddle. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, meeting adjourned at 8:25.